Heavenly Father, we thank you for your many blessings to us. And we thank you for the city of Fergus Falls and those you've put in various positions of authority. And we ask that tonight you'd be with us tonight at this meeting as we consider the various pieces of business before us and give us wisdom and grace as we discuss and decide the things that we have to work on tonight. Pray your continued blessing on our community. Pray for safety for those who serve us on the police and fire departments and elsewhere. And we just are grateful for your many blessings to us and the place that we have to live here and enjoy. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Scott. Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30, August 2nd, 2021, and I will call this meeting of the city, Fergus Falls City Council, to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and there are no additions or corrections that I'm aware of, so I would entertain a motion approving the agenda as presented.
I'll allow for that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thanks, Krista. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Pose same sign, that motion carries. We have one public hearing this evening, and I will call on our Finance Director, Bill Somler, to introduce that issue. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. Thank you, Your Honor and Council. I'll be asking you to open a public hearing tonight for the issuance of bonds on behalf of Lake Region Healthcare. We call this conduit debt. We've done this several times before for the hospital as well as our nursing homes in town. We're authorized by state statute to issue bonds on their behalf. So we're acting as that conduit. They get a better interest rate by going through the city of Fergus Falls. The city of Fergus Falls is not on the hook for the debt at all. There's clauses in the contract that the taxing powers of Fergus Falls can never be put in place to pay the bonds. The bonds are solely payable from the revenues of Lake Region Healthcare. This is a not-to-exceed amount of $21 million, and it is for electronic medical records system. So I'm asking you to hold a public hearing, and then you have a resolution, and I'll just read the title of that resolution that you'll be acting upon. It's Resolution Relating to the Municipal Industrial Development Act, Authorizing the Issuance of Revenue Bonds on behalf of Lake Region Healthcare Corporation, and Authorizing Execution and Delivery of Documents Relating There Too. And Kami Patterson, the Chief Financial Officer for the hospital, is here as well if you have questions for her.
Thank you, Bill. And Kami, would you like to address the council before we open the public hearing? Good evening, Kami.
So, good evening, Your Honor and council members. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and we're really excited about this electronic health record. Probably doesn't sound very exciting, but it's really important. It's a mission-critical thing for our hospital. We've been operating on a couple different systems at Lake Region and even a third one at Prairie Ridge. This will help us really create that enterprise, and it's really critical to being able to retain and recruit the great clinicians that we currently have. People want to work with a really good system, so this is important for us. It's a big price tag, but we want to certainly optimize the hospital dollars, and so we thank you for allowing us to go through the city to do this, and would ask for approval. And I will take questions if there are any.
Thank you, Kami. Anyone have any questions for Kami before we open the public hearing? Thank you. Hearing done.
Welcome.
I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the issue of the authorizing of the issuance of revenue bonds to Lake Region Healthcare through conduit debt not to exceed $20 million, please step to the lecter and identify yourself. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. It's back to the council. We can authorize this through a resolution.
I'll allow for that.
Thank you, Krista.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Any further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
I will abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll abstain as well.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you to Lake Region Healthcare for your partnership in our community. We appreciate it. Under awarding of bids tonight, we have a resolution awarding the construction services contract for the Union Avenue project, and I will call on our City Engineer, Brian Uvalo. Good evening, Brian.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor and members of the council. On Wednesday, July 28th, 2021, sealed bids were opened and publicly read aloud for this Union Avenue Street and pedestrian improvement project from Junius Avenue to Lincoln. Two bids were received at time of the opening. Central Specialties submitted the lowest bid amount of $722,918. The engineer's estimate of cost is about $656,000. We've conducted a review of the bids and find all bids are responsive and in order. I believe these bids are a little bit higher, but I believe the main contributing factor is that we're proposing to do this kind of work under live traffic conditions, even though there will be lane shifts, things of that nature, but still going to try to maintain traffic to its fullest extent possible. Therefore, I'm requesting to award the construction services contract to Central Specialties in an amount of $722,918. I would just like to note, this is a municipal state aid project, and therefore, this project will be funded 100% through those funding allocations, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. Would someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll allow for that.
Thank you, Caroline. Second, Jim. Questions, comments for Brian?
I've got it.
Anthony, yeah, go ahead.
It just seems like a lot of money for kind of three blocks, and I wonder, you know, when we're spending this amount of money, you know, can we get more if we, you know, it just seems like we have a hard time maintaining roads as it is in general, and then we're spending, you know, the equivalent of almost $250,000 on a block, you know, because it's three blocks, this piece. It just seems a lot of money, you know, in relationship to kind of what we get generally. It's kind of a comment, more than anything. Yeah, when you look at the rest of kind of Union, it could do with resurfacing as well, and we're going to put all this in one core place.
One thing I would say, and I believe Union is scheduled from, I'm sorry, the rest, yeah, Union north of Lincoln.
Yes.
Construction season, correct? All the way up to Farr Avenue?
Yes, Your Honor, if I may. Yeah, next year, we're scheduled for resurfacing at Union from Freiburg to Lincoln, and then also Lincoln, downtown Lincoln, from Union to Freiburg. That's part of a federal stip project that we got in process right now. For a colleague, I believe that was a few weeks ago, we did enter an agreement with more engineering to start that process, being it is a federal aid project, but that is on a docket for next year. Being a resurfacing project, I believe that's about $1.2 million that we're estimating on that project. Once again, 80% funded through federal aid, 20% through state aid funds.
That's all.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you, Brian. There are no petitions or communications this evening. Under the consent agenda, there's 12 items in your packet. We've placed them on the board as well, or most of them on the board as well, anyway. But that's okay, because Scott Kwame was going to pull 10, 11, nine, 10, 11 is what, anyway, so we'll bring those out of there, bring this down to nine items, and then would anyone else like to talk about any of those items individually, any of the other nine? Hearing done. Entertain a resolution approving the nine other. Thank you, Brent.
Second, Your Honor.
Tom. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number nine is a motion directing the city attorney to rezone campus addition from R1 to R4. Scott, did you have a question or comment on that?
These three altogether, nine, 10, and 11, are all with the same topic, the same map, and so I thought it would be best to treat them as a group initially, and then we can look at them one at a time. But I don't have a particular issue with the zoning question. It's just that as it relates to the other two items, it's probably significant to have this conversation about all three parts of it. I think that it's very likely that whatever might get built in this area, could be multifamily or whatever, so I think that the zoning, I really have no issue with the zoning in this case. And so I think that to go ahead with agenda item number, consent agenda item number nine, I'd like to just make the motion to go ahead with that.
Is there a motion? Is there a second to that?
Second.
Thank you. Jim, any questions? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries for number nine. Okay, on to number 10, which is a resolution. This is where you had a question?
Yeah, so with 10 and 11, as they relate to this, the reason I pulled these is that this neighborhood, if you want to call it that, this particular development area is within the confines or within the line of the historic district that includes the RTC. And the RTC master plan process has been in the works for a couple of years now and actually just wrapped up last Friday. I mean, it just literally is still hot off the presses, and we haven't had a chance as a council to see that and review it yet, and I don't know to what degree Campus Development Group or the developers have had a chance to see how that might affect what they may or may not want to build, or how it might affect what they're going to do. As you have perhaps been aware in other places, not so common here in Fergus, but there'll be homeowners associations or other restrictions that'll often be put on a development, whether, you know, has this kind of windows or this kind of setbacks or this kind of roof line or, you know, there's lots of different things that can be added or required of a particular development, and I think it's at least likely that SHPO will have some requirements or some very strong suggestions, let's say, for whatever development might come within this RTC master plan neighborhood. And it might include all brick. It might include certain kinds of windows. It might include tile roofs. It might include nothing, but there's an unknown there that I think we need to allow for some time to find out what that might be. And so my motion would be to take both number 10 and number 11. If you want to do them one at a time, I guess that's fine, but at this point, if we wanted to take number 10 and table it to our next committee, the whole meeting, so that we can get a chance to see the master plan and have a chance to see how this may or may not fit in some ways with, you know, what's coming that we just haven't seen, because it's just been released today. So that's the motion, I guess. We'd be to take this and set it aside till our next committee, the whole meeting, for discussion at that time.
At that time, Your Honor, I will second his motion.
Go ahead. All right, we have a motion saying.
And then the other part, we kind of, in the land that was on Martins Close, you know, there was a plan for multi-housing over there, and then when that came to the council, it was almost like a fait accompli in that when the neighborhood really understood what the traffic flow was going to be, it was all kind of dead-ending and coming back out again, and we looked at, obviously, trying to make it circular. You know, by doing these variances now, are we locking ourselves up into, you know, the same sort of scenario where traffic goes in and out of one place, or is the traffic going to come out of two places or three places? Because that was a big debate in the neighborhood, and obviously, you know, that probably goes to the vet's home, or it can go out, obviously, I suppose, through the campus as it is now. So is there any way we can see a plan of what they're proposing? Before we, you know, I don't want to lock us in a box like we did last time.
Your Honor, Councilmember Hicks, there is a preliminary plat in your packet on page 39, and as contemplated by the developer in this case, one entrance and all of it would be on Park Street, and the other would be, I guess it would be North Union, coming back by those single-family homes that used to be part of the RTC campus. So there'd be in and out in both directions. That's contemplated on this plat.
Could you want to speak to the, if that is, do you want to speak to the timing of, you know, if we delay this? Do you know if that affects the timing of the developer?
Yeah, Your Honor, the developer's in the audience tonight, and I don't want to put him or her on the spot, but.
Donovan, would you like to address? I'll put him on the spot. Well, just, you know, just, thanks for being here, and just to the question, I mean, if we delayed this for a week and a, oh, two weeks, I guess, is that, what does that do to your timeline?
Well, two weeks probably doesn't do a whole lot. If it continues to go further, it'd probably affect our timeline. Our goal is to, is we're pushing as hard as we can to get some foundations in the ground yet this year, so I think if things continue to push out, you know, to go off of what Scott was saying there, if we're, if there's going to be some stipulations that are going to be put on or suggested strongly within this development, that'll be a big deal.
Yeah.
For our plans, but something.
Yeah, I think that SHPO, you can correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, but with that particular property, SHPO can't require anything. It'd be up to the council if they wanted to go by something that's in the master plan. So I think if two weeks doesn't delay your project, I think maybe to Scott's point, we could have time to see what's in there, and then the council has time to digest that and make, you know, decide if they would want to put anything in.
So what kind of information are you guys looking for to be able to have a good analysis in two weeks from now if it's acceptable?
I think just what Scott's suggesting is, he just wants the council time to digest the master plan that they've been working on that just was completed on Friday, and but this is completely up to the council office. There's a motion and a second to delay.
We haven't voted on it yet, but I guess the question isn't so much about what you would be presenting to us as it would be what we've yet to see from the master plan team and what they might want to see in this whole neighborhood that happens to include your proposed project.
Okay.
And, you know, if they were to suggest whatever, like, say, for example, they wanted everything within this neighborhood to be done in brick, for example, I would expect that would change your costs substantially.
True statement.
So I think it would be best if we heard that before we approved everything, and then you had a chance to make whatever adjustments might be appropriate. It seems like it would be a good way to have a heads up, and I would have liked to have had a chance to visit with you about this earlier. I apologize that I didn't just, I wasn't, timing-wise, able to do that.
Okay.
So that's, the motion is to delay. And again, the motion is not that we're going, the motion, just to be clear, is not that we're going to make any additional requirements on the property. It's simply allowing the council the time to digest the, so, and that's up to the council if they want that two weeks or if they don't.
I think as we paid the money for the study, and that was part of our agreement with SHPO that we would do the study, then it would be appropriate that the council has a chance to read it prior to making any decisions. But can it be circulated? I mean, it was, if it's hot off the press, I mean.
It's so hot off the press, I haven't even seen it yet.
Yep. I mean, that's the only thing about two weeks is, like, when are we actually going to have it?
I'm getting some 120s in the background. I don't know what 120 means, but.
Your Honor, what we're talking about.
I hope that's not days.
What we're talking about, Your Honor, is there's 60-day rules that play into some of these things. We want to, we're trying to figure out the date of application so we can ensure that by delaying this two weeks, we're not putting the developer or the city in a tough spot. So that's the conversation we're having. I think Karen might have the answer.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor and council. This was a preliminary plat only.
Thanks, Tom.
And therefore, the decision deadline is 120 days. This was only a preliminary plat.
So we have, we have time.
There's also a variance request.
Yeah, the variance is included in the motion as well.
So as the developer, I mean, you're okay and you agree that we can extend this issue out two weeks? Is that okay with you?
Oh, you have a choice.
Hi. I mean, I, there's a couple of things that I'm unaware of, and that would be the date of your application, but there's this thing called the 60-day rule that for certain types of actions, and such as the variance request, that we have to act within 60 days upon your request, and I'm not sure when you submitted your application. But we can, don't have to worry about that question if you say, yeah, I'm fine with two more weeks.
Your Honor? So the, whatever's in the master plan isn't going to bind us to anything as far as this development goes? Is that correct?
Correct. I believe that's, I don't believe anything in the master plan. The five years of historic tax credits do not apply to anything that's on outside of the national horseshoe at this point.
If that's the case, you know, let's use the example that Councilmember Kwame brought up about brick. You know, I mean, if they say, yeah, we want everything in the neighborhood to be brick, I'm not going to be inclined to pass that extra cost on to the developer, you know, to require that. And so I don't know what is going to come out of the master plan that's going to, that we're going to impose on someone who's trying to do business in our city, you know. So I guess I don't necessarily see the reason for the delay unless I'm missing something. I mean, if it's going to be more of guidelines, then we could, we, you know, if there's guidelines that come out of the master plan that we can work with the developer, you know, after that comes out and say, hey, would you consider incorporating these into your development? But I don't necessarily see the need to mandate and put that burden on the developer.
Well, and to that point, you're just talking foundations. You're wanting foundations, and that's not going to be on the outside of anything you'll see, really.
Sure, thank you.
I could add one other thing, though, Ben. Well, you're coming up, Donovan. There's another aspect of this is how it affects tax credits and the use of them or not. And that's an option for you as a developer, that if you wanted to put this up using historical tax credits, for example, you would need to meet the guidelines from SHPO. If you chose to go ahead with your development and we were to approve it and ignored those guidelines, then you would not be eligible for the tax credits. The reason for the tax credits are twofold. One is to try and level the playing field for when people have to do certain things to meet requirements to make it more of an apples-to-apples comparison cost-wise. But the other one is to give you the ability to meet those using tax credits, and then, you know, whether it's mandated or not, it gives you an option, and maybe it's a good thing. Maybe you end up finding that you could upscale and get the tax credits, and it doesn't cost you anymore. You know, it all ends up as a wash. I don't know that it does or doesn't, but I mean, that's just another aspect of this for what it's worth.
Okay, so maybe to answer that question, and so if it pertains to receiving funds from a historic tax credit, our plan does not, is not looking to access any of those funds. So it seems to, it seems to me like if we were to, in the future, let's just say that R4 area we're looking for, we wanted to make that look historic, then we would have to abide by certain rules in order to receive certain credits. Am I correct in that? But if we choose not to accept those credits, then we don't have to?
Yeah, there's no tax credits involved in new construction. There's no historic tax credits involved in new construction, so.
Oh, wow.
Right, so, just to be clear on that.
Your Honor, if I could just add, so the property that is in question tonight has nothing to do with tax credits, because there's not a building there where tax credits apply. The master plan that we sent out and said we would do is for the campus, not bare land, that's to the east of the campus. So I don't see any value in delaying him to move forward when we clearly have a need for development in our community for housing, which tax credits don't apply to new construction, and it's not in the designated campus where you can get the tax credits. So I don't know what we're going to gain in two weeks from a report in delaying them to move forward on the next step. So I would be in favor of moving forward as presented.
Scott, since you were on the committee, can I just ask a question? When they, when the, when that committee defined the campus, was that bare land part of the campus?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Yeah. Your Honor, that bare land is part of the campus because when Schlossman's expanded the designation to utilize historic tax credits on the red brick buildings, they included that property as they owned it at the time. So it's technically part of the boundary of the national registered designation as a campus, but the other part of what you said is exactly right. There are no tax credits that play here, and as the landowner, they can do whatever they want. I mean, within the city's regulations.
Your Honor, but would there be designation on type and structure or not through SHPO? Because it is being built on, on national kind of registered land.
Not as part of the, not as part of our agreement with SHPO on those funds, like, of our requirements for that agreement, correct?
Yeah, no, I mean, the only downfall to doing something outside of what SHPO would prescribe was it could impact the entire campus's designation if it becomes too modern and it no longer qualifies for historic district, but they're not going to take that designation away from that facility because of this. They may amend the boundary to exclude that, so the actual campus is still, you know, very historic, but I don't think there's any implications if they were to build a single-family or a twin-home development. Now, you know, to Councilmember Kwame's point, and I don't know if we should delay this or win this either, but the consultants could have prescribed a use in a master plan, and if the council, you know, adopts a master plan and they want to abide by it, they can certainly encourage that type of development in that space, but I don't even know what they're contemplating that space to be used for. Maybe somebody that was on that committee can say, I don't know.
We haven't seen it.
Okay.
So I'm afraid I can't answer that.
I would like, I'd like to.
It's not so different than what the city did for their downtown and had a master plan that included all sorts of things in places that are privately owned, where the owners had no idea that their facility was, you know, pegged to be a community park or something. So, I mean, master plans have lots of suggestions in them, and that's what I expect we'll get from this RTC plan.
Thanks, Scott.
I'll just say this and be done. I mean, we've dealt with that facility for a long time. We've got 600,000 square feet to deal with, and if we can get some done and have to amend the boundary, great. So I'm in favor of them moving forward without seeing the master, master plan.
Thanks. So the motion on the floor that we're going to vote on right now is whether or not we're going to table this decision to grant the variance or the preliminary plat for two weeks. Everyone clear on that? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
That motion fails. So with that, we would look for a resolution approving.
I'll allow for that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number 11 is a resolution approving the preliminary plat of the same proposed project. Someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll say, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight we have a second reading, ordinance 16, eighth series, authorizing the issuance of a not-to-exceed-of-three-million general obligation bonds by the Port Authority of Fergus Falls. We'll call on our Finance Director, Bill Somler.
Thank you, Your Honor and council. I know we don't normally speak to second readings of ordinances, but I wanted to point out a couple of things on this one. First, this, this will be the final reading on this ordinance that authorizes the Port Authority to issue bonds to finance the downtown riverfront project. We're setting the maximum at $3 million. We do not intend to issue bonds of $3 million. We intend to reduce that amount by some liquor store funds going towards that, as well as water and sewer funds that could also qualify for the American Rescue Plan Act funds, and we can certainly deal with that either way at a minimum, water and sewer funds for the water and sewer portions. And then at the last meeting, Councilmember Hicks had brought up, wanted to see what a debt service schedule would look like for the $3 million project is what he asked for. So I did provide that to you, the $3 million, if you were to bond for the hole, and then And then I gave you two other scenarios as well. And since then, I laid on your desk one that I just updated on Friday, I believe it was, with our bonding people. So you have four different scenarios on there. And maybe we'll start from kind of a high level that was requested and just work back down. So if we issued a $3 million bond, and this is in your memo as well, just summarizing, you'd add issue costs on top of that. And the annual debt service would be 242,000 for that on average. So that's for a $3 million bond issue. Again, we don't intend to issue that, that much. And we'll get, get there as we go through each of these scenarios. The next one would be if we did not receive the additional state bonding funds that we've requested in next year's legislative session. So that would, we'd need to bond for another million dollars over what we're planning to right now. And then that would be a total of about 210,500 of annual debt service. And then the lower example, as of the time the packet came out, was 1.7 million. That was taking phase one, reducing it by the liquor store contributions. And that was an average annual debt service of 128,000. Now, what I laid on your desks tonight was a par amount of the bonds of 1,465,000. Reducing that again, using the 400 from the liquor store, and then also using water and sewer funds to pay for the water and sewer fund improvements. Now, that may also qualify for ARPA funds and then you would, you know, you're still using it for the water and sewer portion. It would be the same amount, the 245,000 is what I reduced that. And then you would get to an average annual levy of about 115,000. You take the average annual debt service of what you'd see in your packet, and then that goes up 105% to get to about 115,000. The first year, 105% levy would be 112,848. And that's really what I'm looking at putting in the budget as I'm building that budget right now. So just wanted to lay that out for you so you could see all the different scenarios that we look at when we go through these before you take your roll call on your second reading. We will be coming back to you and to the Port Authority with future actions as well after the sale gets set, and then the council will ratify that sale as well. But this is the ordinance authorizing the Port Authority to bond.
Thank you, Bill.
So as a follow-up question to, so how, how much would kind of 100,000 dollars impact the taxpayer?
You know, I don't have a calculation on a, on the homeowner, but you know, it would probably be, you know, maybe one, 1%, little over 1%, one to one and a half right in there.
Right.
So this is, then we don't need a resolution on this, we just need a roll call. Any other questions before we call the roll? Roll call please.
Yes.
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 That ordinance is approved. Item number two is a resolution approving a variance for the accessory building in a side yard with no setback at 107 East Oriole Drive. And we'll call on our city planner, Karen. Would you like to address the council?
Thank you, your honor and council. Yes, this motion was from last week's planning commission, this case. And the motion to approve, recommend approval of the variance failed at planning commission. And so that is why this item is coming before you and the council today. And I can answer any questions about the case, but the applicant is here as well and would like to address the council if the chair so permits.
Of course, thank you. Karen, would you like to address the council at this time? Please do. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, your honor and council members. My name is Ellie Drager, and we just want to put a shed up in our side yard. And one of the issues that we have with our property is that it's a pie-shaped lot. So they're counting the front yard and the side yard as a front yard. So we needed a variance for that because we want to put the shed on the side yard. And the reason we can't put it in the backyard is we do have a pool in the backyard. So there's really no area to put up a shed in that area. Otherwise, we could have put one up in the backyard. So we're just looking to put a shed in our side yard. And I also checked, actually, since Celine owns the property to the, to the west of my property, they have a group home over there. So I did check with them to see if it would be okay, if we would first of all, put up the shed. And they did okay it, so it's all right with them if we go ahead and put it up. Another thing is that where our pool is, we would be removing the fence in that area so the shed would actually act as part of the fence in that area. And the reason we needed the variance for that is that our fence already does go right to the edge of their property. And so when I asked them if that would be okay, if it was just extended by the amount of a shed, they said, yeah, that would be fine. It wouldn't be a big deal. And then also, the front of the shed, which would be in the side yard facing the street, wouldn't go any farther than the group home's garage. So it would be, you know, it would look nice in accordance with the rest of the frontage property that way, so.
Okay.
And I know they wanted us to get something that would match our home and whatnot, so it would look nice. But we would, we would get something that would be appropriate in the area, so.
Sure. Thank you, Ellie. Does anyone have any questions? Ellie, Scott?
I'd like to bring the, offer the resolution and offer an amendment to it.
Yes. Scott, so you're offering a resolution with our, resolution with the amendment? What's the amendment?
I'd like to amend this to read no larger than eight by 10 and to maintain the five foot setback. And the comments I guess I would make is, I went and drove by and took a look, and I can understand why you would want the garage, the additional storage space. I'm of the opinion that you cannot build a garage too large under any circumstances. And I suffer from that myself. And yet, the fact that your home has a pool in the backyard kind of wipes out where you would have put a shed if you had the option that way. And so in a way, you chose to get a pool instead of a shed. And yet, I can see where having a shed as built into your fence along the side there would work fine and would effectively do the same thing as the fence. But I'm afraid that 16 feet wide looks like it would get out too close to the front of your neighbor's garage. And by putting it 20 feet deep right up against the fence line, again, again, I think it just gets so close to the neighbor's house that if you were to go with something eight by 10 and maintain the five foot setback, it would look better. And I think that in the years to come, when there's different owners there, that maybe would appreciate that. That's the way I would like to read it.
So resolution would have a eight by, a maximum size? Your amendment that you've offered in your resolution has an eight foot, eight by 10 maximum shed size and a five foot setback?
Correct.
Someone like to second that for discussion?
I can second it for discussion.
Okay, so if we have a resolution with that amendment, Ellie, would you like, we'll get staff as well?
I just need to ask before we, I would ask Karen if that would even require a variance? Because if it wouldn't, then we wouldn't have an action to take here today. You'd be denying this variance and staff could approve that.
This still would require a variance based on the placement. So the current accessory building ordinance prohibits an accessory building in both a side yard and the front yard, which this would count as. So regardless of the size, it's more about the placement. And with the original variance request, the setback from the property line. And then just for the purposes of discussion, so that the council can have the, the full facts in our R2 zoning district, which is what this property is located in, the setback for an accessory structure would be three feet from a side property line.
And then Karen, could you just give us a recap of the discussion that had at the planning commission? Was, were, were any of these issues discussed there? And then just give us your opinion as far as the, and just recap how the planning commission discussion went?
Sure, so the planning discussion, as Counselor Kwame mentioned, was noting about the size of the structure and sort of the location to the property line and concerns about future owners at the property to the west. Both with the placement of the shed and the size was the issue that was brought up. And the property owner was unfortunately unable to be there to answer questions, which I know is also a sort of limiting factor for discussion from the planning commission.
So is there a recommendation from the planning commission and/or staff? Is, is the recommendation to approve the variance as presented?
The staff recommendation was approval, and the planning commission made a resolution, made a motion to approve the variance, but it did end in a tie. And so we consulted with the city attorney, and it was his opinion that that was just a failed resolution. And so that is why it did not appear on consent today with the recommendation from the planning commission.
Okay, so staff brought a recommendation for approval is tied at the planning commission. Thank you, Karen, for that. Mr. Drager, would you like to address the amendment as that would affect your project? Or just any comments to that?
Um, yes, I guess, you know, just for a number of reasons, we were looking for a bit of a larger shed. I also do have a business in my garage, which again, I, I realize because that was a choice that I made back then. And, you know, we are just needing more storage than what an eight by 10 would. So we're just requesting, you know, anything larger than that, that would be able to be approved, you know, would be appreciated, so.
And one other question, so was there any other comments by neighbors, neighboring properties other than the Cinceline group home?
Uh, no one spoke at the public hearing and no comments were received either in advance of the staff report or the planning commission meeting.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Justin?
Maybe just a question on the 16 by 20. My computer died, so I'm stealing Caroline's, but is that, that's within the three foot, three foot setback that's required, I assume? Or is that with a three foot setback from the property line?
We can handle it. So the, the 16 by 20, based on the diagram that was provided by the property owner with the variance application, is essentially a corner that's on the property line. So that would be considered a zero foot setback.
Thank you. Brent?
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to be in favor of it. I've, I've told Andrew this many times before. I think the city sticks their nose in certain areas way too much. And I don't have a problem with this, and I would like to see it go forward.
Thanks, Brent. Anthony?
I just, obviously, just mentioned that we run a business out the garage. Do we have a continual conditional use permit for that on file?
I don't think she would have dared go before the planning commission. No, I'm just, I'm just kidding.
Yes, that is my understanding, that there is a conditional use permit.
Okay, any other questions, comments before we vote on the amended motion? So the motion we're going to vote on, I'm sorry, it's a resolution. The resolution we're going to vote on is the amended resolution. So if, if you're in favor of the amended resolution, you vote yes. If you're, would like to reconsider the original as staff presented resolution, then you would vote no, just so we're clear, right? Is everyone clear on that? Yeah, Justin?
Maybe just a comment, I think, you know, we have rules in place, but with modifications requested and without the neighboring property showing concerns, I guess I would vote in favor of what they want to do and go with staff's recommendation. So I'll be voting no for the amended, and we'll see what happens after that.
Okay, so we're going to call the roll on the amended resolution. Roll call please.
Kwame?
Yes.
No.
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 That resolution is not approved, that fails. So would someone like to, I'd assume, offer the original?
The original resolution.
I'll second.
Thank you. Krista? Roll call please.
No.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution approving the extension of a purchase agreement with Rivers Edge Investments LLC. We'll call the city administrator, Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, thank you, your honor, council members. Hopefully, this one goes a little smoother, and I think it will. Looking for a resolution tonight extending the purchase agreement with Rivers Edge Investments LLC for the city-owned parking lot near Shopko. We extended it a few months ago to September 1st, 2021. And at that time, the council said if there was going to be a subsequent extension, you would want to hear from the developer. Again, the developer is here this evening and is prepared to give you an update on where things are at with this project. And then after that update, hoping to extend this purchase agreement another eight months, which gets us to May 1st, 2022. And then the developer will know whether they're going to catch next building season or not and can either close on the property or ask the council for additional action. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rognes to give an update on where things sit and then looking for that resolution.
Thanks, Andrew. Good evening again.
Um, so as we know, last winter, when we put this thing out for bids, it was rated the incline of the extreme construction costs. So we were discouraged when we got our bids back at the actual price of the structure. And so the development group is still desiring to do the project. We just had to take a step back and figure out, okay, how does, how does this work financially? And so we are hoping that construction costs can plateau. We are hoping that we can find some reduction from now until the spring when we'll bid again. And we're hoping to work with the city for some other financing options. We're looking to work with subcontractors for value engineering the building. Just, there's multiple items on the table, but the ultimate goal is to still proceed with the project. But we just had a hiccup with construction costs.
And the May 1st coincides with, that's when you plan to bid again next?
We'll bid before May 1st, but there's also a, there's also a grant that the state of Minnesota offers that the award date is in March. And so we'll know if we have, if we can get that grant. And then that'll just give us time to digest where we're at. And hopefully, we can continue the project, so.
Thanks.
That's why we're asking for that eight month extension to get us past March 1st.
Thank you, Donovan. Someone like to offer a resolution approving that extension? Thank you, Krista. Thanks, Brent. Any questions of the developer? Roll call please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Item number four is a resolution approving a contact for the services to manage the Bigwood Event Center. We'll call again on Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, thank you, your honor, council members. Really happy to be in front of you this evening with this item after many, many months of hard work from a lot of folks and a lot of due diligence. We're pleased to present this this evening. And before I dive into it, I want to just acknowledge a few folks. We have a few folks here from LHR, Doug, Leah, and Lisa as well. At the tail end of this, hopefully, they have some good remarks and can answer any questions that all of you folks have. But it was nice to welcome them this evening. And then I also just want to thank quickly Gene Bowman, Bill Sonmore, Sandy Cunningham, and Mike Hartwell. We spent a lot of time digging through this, looking at various options, considering options, and building the performance that LHR provided that Bill will present here shortly. So thanks, a lot of folks put time and effort into this. And, and like I said, we're excited to be before you this evening. Since we were notified that the development company out there was not going to renew the contract, we dove headfirst and we made a lot of contacts. We've talked to industry experts. We've talked to past employees and managers of this event center. We've talked to other event centers. We've talked to other cities that operate event centers or own event centers. And really, we approached this with all options on the table. And we ultimately decided to meet with a few different management companies. We met with one company onsite that ultimately said that it wasn't a good fit for them. Gene, on our behalf, reached out to several others who never responded. It's definitely a harder venture than we anticipated. And then we did have a great meeting onsite with LHR and have had several discussions since then and have really developed a good working relationship with these folks and feel that this is the right direction for the event center to go. As I mentioned in the memo here, we would be led and overseen by LHR. Their industry expertise and their many years of experience would help guide the reopening of the facility, get us on the right track. And we're proposing that relationship at this point as a three-year relationship. And then the facility would be run by city staff, functioning and operational. Of course, with any new startup, year one is going to have significant work. We're going to lean heavily on LHR to reinvigorate and create revenue streams that'll help us be successful. And of course, with that comes a lot of expense. So when Bill gets up here, he's going to show that, you know, the first couple of years don't look the best. It's not going to cash flow. And I think we need to go into that being transparent and with our eyes wide open. But the goal of a facility like this is to break even or make money. And they're going to put us on a path to be able to do that. And you'll see that through the projections that we have this evening. The action at the end of the presentation tonight is going to be authorizing this three-year contract with LHR. That contract has a $60,000 annual fee, so a total of $180,000. As I mentioned, years two and three are structured, so there is bonus to get to that $60,000 to really. really incentivize them, and really, they want to put their money where their mouth is. So we appreciate that, and we know that they're going to be able to perform. As I mentioned, the five-year performa shows break even near year three, and then with the exception of the management fee, removing that in year four, we are break even, and then after that, we're projecting that revenues would exceed expenditures, and we would be clear. So that's very good. Since the operating loss is a short-term loss, we're proposing that we use non-leaky funds to cover these, and again, Bill will mention that. I do want to remind the council and the public that we have a fund of $220,000 related to capital maintenance at the Big Wood Events Center, but I also want to say the Big Wood Events Center is in great shape for a facility that's 20 years old. We have been reinvesting in the facility. Just about everything, with the exception of the roof, has been touched or redone in the last few years. So we are really sitting good and have that cushion to work with, so. I'll wrap it up here and turn it over to Bill, but I just want to mention if approved, LHR and the city will begin hiring process and work on the startup with the goal of being operational on January 1st. They did indicate that if things go well, we may be able to get things running Q4, and we'll play that by ear. The two primary positions out there, the sales manager and then the operations manager will both be city staff and city employees, so they'll have the full city benefit package to ensure that we get good quality candidates and are able to get the right people in those roles out there. Just, I'll wrap up by seeing the demand that we've seen, and Gene can attest to this, she's the one who takes all these calls on my behalf and the city's behalf, and I think many times I'll go for that, but the demand is there, it's pent up, and folks are ready to utilize the facility. We have several weddings already next summer. I think you'd be hard-pressed to find a weekend in June or July if you want to host a wedding out there, and that's certainly trending in the right direction for us as compared to pre-COVID and what that looked like. So I'm happy to report that the demand is there, we're excited to go down this road, and I'm going to turn it over to Bill to talk numbers, because that's really all that you care about.
Thanks, Andrew.
Well, actually, Andrew covered the big picture of the numbers pretty well for you. Letting you know the first three years, yeah, it's not cash flowing, and we built that in here, worked with LHR on these proformas. They developed the revenue scenarios for us from what they see in the industry, because of course, they're the experts in the industry. We are not here as far as projecting revenue.
Is it possible to put the numbers up or get a copy of them? I think you're asking us to make a vote on a five-year pro forma that we haven't seen?
Yeah, you haven't seen it. I'll give you my copy.
Isn't?
It's not in the, it's not in the packet though.
Otherwise, I'll take a little recess and I'll go make copies right now so you all have. Do any of you have them with you?
No.
Okay. If you want, I'll go get them now, so. Okay, so the revenue forecasts were put together by LHR. I did put some investment earnings in here, that relates to the Big Woods Center Fund as a whole, because we've got that money sitting in the fund. I'm going to wait just a minute here.
Go ahead, I'll run a few copies.
Okay, sounds good. Then Andrew mentioned the two full-time positions. We have those under personnel, that's wages and benefits for those, so that's the two full-time, a sales manager and an operations manager. And then the management fee of $60,000 per year for LHR that Andrew had mentioned. Then other services, this is other personnel-type services, so this is setup and teardown crew and banquet bartenders. These would be employees of LHR, but the city would cover that cost. This is our facility, we are covering all the costs of this, we're collecting all the revenues for it. LHR is receiving that fee of $60,000 per year. Marketing and promotion, $24,000 we're having there for each year for that. That includes, you know, travel, heading out to market the facility, as well as advertising, anything like that is within that one lump sum number. Insurance, self-explanatory, utilities, $55,000 there starting for the first year, that's your telephone, electric, gas, and city utilities. Maintenance cost estimates throughout, and then other was some dues and subscriptions and just some miscellaneous costs. You come down to revenue over or under expenditures, so the first year, $167,125 under the revenues, and looking at funding some of that now from ARPA funds as well as a general fund transfer, and you can see that in the next two years as well. We have basically a net loss the second year of $104,000, and then $73,000 in the year 2024, and then we're basically at break even in 2025, and '26 actually showing a slight profit of $3,600. Now, we feel that we can make a strong argument for using ARPA funds, certainly for the management fees, because as you recall back, as we reflect when our audit was presented, and our fund balance did grow in the city. I don't know if you recall our auditor saying that is, we saw that across the state in a lot of places, because in some of those instances, cities have not seen the full impact of COVID yet. Well, we are seeing it here. We are, this facility was closed because of the impacts of the COVID-19 shutdowns. So certainly, hiring this firm to help dig us back out of COVID-19, I feel very confident in that being a qualifying expenditure. You may even be able to make an argument to make up some of the other costs of getting this facility back up and running. Now, we just received our first half of the ARPA funds, so we're working on that program, and we'll certainly be coming back to you with that. But I feel very confident on the first $180,000. The other we could use from our general fund fund balance that grew, like I said, when we had our audit presented to you, because they would be one-time expenditures, you don't want to live on your savings account, but if you have something you can see that could go away, then you could use those one-time resources, and that's why we place that in in that fashion, because we don't want to levy dollars for that, as that's going to be going away. Now, it's a pro forma, this is not, you know, the actual history of what's going to happen when we are in 2026, it's going to look different than this, but this is our best estimates at this time. So that's kind of what I have on the pro forma, and your thoughts on that, and then, you know, Andrew's making you some copies of it, maybe, do you want to hold some questions till you get back, so you have paper copies in front of you?
Or Anthony, you're ready?
Yeah. I mean, obviously, I just, I think it's a lot of money that we're putting out there. I mean, I know disrespect to the management company, it's, you know, I'm sure that actually they're experts, and that's obviously something, but, you know, do we, we're taking on board two more employees, which obviously is basically another $170,000 a year, you know, the city taxpayer will kind of be on the hook for, you know, long-term, and, you know, is it possible to look at a more encompassing, you know, contract with somebody where they are, they're employees, not our employees?
Well, we certainly looked at that as an option as we started, we looked at it being LHR's employees, but we felt, we wanted those two main people to be city employees because we have a short-term contract with them, and then we want these employees to be able to continue to run so that this runs almost more like an enterprise fund where it is self-sufficient, hopefully not putting tax dollars into it in the future. So that's why we looked at that, and then we're able to attract probably good candidates when you do have the city wages and the benefit package. Benefits, of course, being very important part of that to attract someone to those positions.
The next contract we're going to look to approve is the airport, and we don't have city employees out at the airport to either manage it or, you know, be pilots or anything like that. So, you know, we're doing two different things. I know you can, you'll argue they're two different enterprises, but they're not. You know, they're both city properties, that we're paying more money to manage, and we're going to have a hybrid of something and another one between, you know, some city employees and a consultant, so.
Well, I'm not going to argue the point with you, it's, the facts are what they are, that's what we presented, so, I mean, it.
It was looked at, too, I mean.
Yep. That's our rationale for why we came. Andrew, I was just explaining why we chose city employees for the two main, where, you know, they're here long-term to take over after this contract is done, and that's probably the biggest thing, and then the attraction with the having benefit package with it, so that's kind of what you missed out on there.
I mean, I agree, in a perfect world, we'd love to have the private sector, and ultimately someday, maybe the private sector will run that facility again, but COVID shut it down, there's not a bunch of people knocking on our doors to come in, and in the post-COVID reset, you know, era to run a facility that's probably going to lose money for a couple years in order to get back up to where it needs to be. So if we want a community center and event center as a community, this is what we're going to have to do. I think staff's done a tremendous job working with LHR to put together the best package they can to see that facility get as close to profitable as quick as possible, and to have the community still able to utilize that space, because like Scott said a year ago, without that space, we don't have a gathering place for people over whatever, 100 people, 200, 150 people. I agree with you, it's not perfect scenario by any means, but I think if we're going to continue to have this facility and offer it in our community, the staff's done a good job of putting this together and working with LHR.
And again, our goal was to have a short-term contract of three years and then run in-house, hopefully.
So with that, you guys have the numbers, if there's any other questions, but if we can get a resolution we can ultimately vote on, someone like to offer a resolution approving this contract?
I'll offer it.
Thanks, Caroline.
Second.
Tom, thank you. Questions for, do we want LHR? Would you like to address the council before we, before we vote?
Don't need to, but if you, anyone would like to.
Anyone have any questions for the consultant, the management company?
I could ask a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
I'm not familiar with your company, so if maybe you could tell us where you're based and how many other facilities of this nature that you've got experience or current activity in, that kind of thing would be helpful.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you all, your honor, council, for having us here. I'm Doug Carl, I'm one of the principals in LHR Hospitality. With me is Malia Nagel and Lisa Miller. Doug Rhodey, another one of our principals was going to be here, but family vacation took precedent over that. And to answer your question, we run hotels, resorts, restaurants, banquet facilities. We're primarily Upper Midwest-focused. We've done business in Texas, we've done business in New York, State of New York, and determined that we like the Upper Midwest significantly better. And with that, we run facilities in towns as small as 600. We've also developed and built hotels in the downtown Minneapolis, or east of downtown Minneapolis, the University of Minnesota. And so we are a nimble company, we've been around since, and actually, Malia, I was just thinking about this, it would have been September 2001 is when we came to be, so we're coming up on 20 years of doing business, and I don't think there's one thing that we haven't dealt with, one thing that hasn't cropped up that would probably befuddle most people, but for us, it's, you know, it's second nature, it's what we do and it's what we enjoy doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Any other questions? Will we vote on the contract, or we have a resolution to authorize the contract? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thanks to LHR and also staff for the work on this. Item number five is a resolution approving the airport management FBO contract with Sky Crew Services, and they're also here with us tonight, but we'll turn it over to Justin Arneson, any updates?
I can hit it off, so we talked about this at the committee of the whole, there's been no revisions to the current contract, and the current contract that was presented at the committee of the whole has been signed by Sky Crew Services, so the resolution before you tonight, if we were to move in that direction with action, they've already signed it, so.
It's been signed by Sky Crew, no changes since our committee of the whole. Any questions? Someone like to offer the resolution authorizing the contract?
I'll offer it.
Thank you, Anthony, thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 That resolution.
I just had something on. I just want to thank all the folks that participated, you know, it took a while to get to this process, between city staff, the working group, the council, and the candidates, so I just excited to see what we have going forward at the airport, and thanks to everybody that was involved.
Thanks to you and Krista as well. The information, like you said, it took a little longer than everyone would have liked, but we got to where we are.
Took a village.
Thanks, thanks to Sky Crew Services, we're looking forward to your efforts out there and looking for a thriving airport, and glad to be working with you on that, so thanks, thanks to both of you. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $882,247.21. If I'm, is that correct?
Yep, I can explain that change a little bit.
Go ahead, Bill. It's slightly different than it's in your packet.
Yep, it is different by $247.60. It's actually higher than what was in your packet. Our AP clerk found that there was a credit memo included in the resolution of accounts that should wait until there's an invoice to go with that, so that credit memo, you can't generate a negative check. So took that out, then that's what brought your resolution of accounts up by $247.60.
All right, and with that, we have an.
I'll offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Resolution to pay the bills, thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Any questions for Bill?
Could make one comment.
Oh, yes.
I mentioned this to Bill earlier, and just for those who might be paying attention to what expenses go out and needing to understand just how they apply, there was an expense for $11,664 for strength training to Paul Rats, and as I understand it, that is for park and rec programs that are completely 100% paid by participant fees. I get that right, Bill?
You are correct. We retain 10% of those fees for our administration, and then the instructor receives 90%.
Thanks, Scott. With that, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no board committee department reports, there are no reports from staff administrative officers, there is no old or unfinished business, and there is no new business that I am aware of, so unless Lynn has any announcements.
Night out tomorrow, national night out tomorrow.
August 3rd, Thursday, or Tuesday, August 3rd, national night out, yeah. Join your neighborhood party, if you don't have one in your neighborhood, find a neighbor that does.
Mike Alice has one.
Your honor, I have, I have two things. Number one, we had the American Legion substate attorney here about a week and a half ago, and I just want to commend the grounds crew for all the work they did on the field during the games, they were there between the games to redo the field and the whole works, they did a fantastic job.
Yeah, that's, several people, so.
Please, please tell them that they did a great job. And then, the second thing I want to mention is, there was a letter in the newspaper here about somebody that had a bad experience in one of our motels, and Andrew reached out to them, and I think that was great on his part to do that, and thank you for doing that, Andrew.
Absolutely, thanks, Andrew.
Justin, I wonder if you maybe want to mention about the water restricting, I know we talked about it at committee of the whole, but would you want to mention that if anybody's watching? Restriction on water?
Give us just a brief overview of what we passed on Wednesday morning?
Sure, yeah, we're just following the request of the DNR to implement water restrictions, so the restrictions are no watering of your lawns unless on an odd day, if your address is odd, was odd calendar day, you can water on that day, starting at 8:00 PM, and you can water until 8:00 AM. So same with an even day, we're asking that no pools be filled, little waiting pools we're okay with, but we just don't want the big backyard pools getting filled. And things that are exempt are newly seeded or sodded lawns, flower gardens, and vegetable gardens.
Thanks, Guy.
Thanks, Guy.
And then, of course, it's that time of year, big Friday this Friday, so get out and go watch some championship baseball down at Broadway and Red Sox Park and wherever else they're from, so with that, we're.